All right, go ahead and call the meeting to order. First item on the agenda is to approve the agenda. We have any, we have four additions.
Additions to the hires, yeah.
The hires. Anything else that we needed to add?
No.
I will move to approve the agenda with the additional hires of Amanda Halfhill, Middle School Secretary Kathy Hansel Morris, High School Food Services Valerie Nelson, High School Food Services and Valerie Hildebrandt Lambert Food Services.
Hold on.
Second.
Close in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Well, item three, the consent items. Policies? Which had a reasonable amount of policies to read through this.
It was, yes, a little more manageable. Yeah, yeah.
The one question I had was policy two eleven, the new one with the new board members needing training. Has IASB said whether or not they're going to include that in like their convention with the Ready, Set, Govern series at all?
Yeah, I don't know if that'll be the exact series they go with, but they did say that whoever's elected within November cycles will be able to take care of it. It'll start, yep, and those people would be able to take care of it at board convention. Anyone outside of that, there would be something. We'll just have to remember.
Because not everybody goes to convention.
Yeah, or if there has to be an appointment of some kind or an off-cycle election, we'll have to keep that in mind, but, yeah.
Said, of course.
Are people grandfathered in if they're, even if they're rerunning?
Yes, yeah. They said that you could, it's optional to do it if you are already serving, but.
Sure you've taken most of those courses.
Also see, we get to save a little postage on the certified letters.
That was what I was going to pull out, yeah. No more certified letters, which is good. It allows us a little bit more flexibility. Still need a document, which we will do, but, yeah, that certified was a welcome change from the legislature on that. And we'll be sure to communicate those changes to families too, as far as the, what that looks like now in our district and the new exemptions that are in there and things like that. We'll get all that into our communication.
I like the one that we're putting in the school safety assessment team. I, even though it's optional, I do like that you guys are looking into doing something with that.
I didn't have any additions more.
I motion that we approve the consent items.
I'll second.
Favor?
Aye.
Yeah, I was going to say Luke can cover the bills. Yep, he did. Text me this morning. Thanks. All right, we'll, item four, announcements and communications, comments from the public. Here, so, guess we'll bypass comments from public today. Any updates from our clubs? I don't know if anybody met Friends of Music.
You can take the summer off.
I figure everyone.
Yeah, I left my notes. I'm sorry. They met Wednesday, June, I think it was the eighteenth. Lighter schedule. The free meeting at five to discuss funding for the New York trip and the start. And I think they've had a lot of internal discussions as an organization as well, but officially not sure about the month of July here and August. You know, this is membership, membership drive season.
So they're still active and busy.
Yeah, yeah. That's it from the Friends of Music.
How do they have a, like a subcommittee for the New York?
Yeah, basically, it's two individuals that kind of run point. They did it the last time. The Friends of Music organization has three extremely strong, capable women in the leadership. Julie Sleeper as president and then Lori Hartman, Jamie Jolly, and so we're very fortunate to have those, those three, those three individuals in the organization and they're extremely organized when it comes to the New York City. So I'm sure this fall, they'll be the typical fundraiser. Be prepared.
Yes.
Good question.
Nothing from academic or athletic, I assume?
No, athletic will probably meet, was that August sixth, maybe? First Wednesday?
Right before season.
Right before, because that'll, they'll start the membership drive as well for the self-boost.
Okay, thanks. All right, we'll move on to item number five, second reading of policies.
I did make, go back and make sure you didn't have to do everything.
I appreciate that. Yeah, just following up, we talked about the designee, keeping that in those few policies listed there. Some of the district media center there. In just updating wording and making sure on six oh three oh five, the age-appropriate research base gets us in line with current legislation, so.
I'll move to approve the second reading of policies.
Second.
Close in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
opposed? Since it's summertime, we don't have any board reports from our administration, so there's another, we'll move through item six. I don't think we have any old business for item seven, so we're cruising right along. Item eight, our twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six handbooks.
Yeah, so a couple of things you'll see there. We changed the format of our student handbook this year. And just, we're trying to, I don't know, just find a way to communicate in a more user-friendly manner. Our handbook was getting pretty long, and so we, as an admin team, took the time this year to kind of sit down. We held it up against IASB's recommended and made sure we had all the content that's required or recommended from the state level. And then put that into what you'll see, we called it the Hawk Hub. Just to put information, like I said, kind of in a user-friendly, you'll notice the first tab is the district level stuff. That's where a lot of the policy stuff falls, and then the three tabs along the bottom for the buildings is more, you know, like what's the bell schedule for the high school? Or just some of that good-to-know information, and we'll keep updating that as, you know, if we see trends of what parents are asking, what questions they're asking, we might add something to it, yeah. We just really want to get the kind of a one-stop shop that parents get accustomed to being able to go in and navigate. We also cleaned up some of it where some of the things that were, it was just reiterating board policy. So we just put the link to the board policy as opposed to re-typing all the words out. That helps us too, as we're updating, to not have to update twice. Once we update board policy, then it'll be updated in the handbook as well. There really was not a lot of content changes. I don't know if principals have anything to add there, but there wasn't a ton. You know, we had, one of the bigger lips would have been the cellphone bill that came out of legislature this year, but we already had that in place last year, so that was not a major change for us here locally in our handbook. Other than that, there really just was not, you know, like I said, with the attendance, that stuff will be updated in there. Yeah, really straightforward.
I liked it. I went through it last, and it got posted and real easy to navigate, so.
I like it too. I like, it's a lot easier to navigate. I think it's, it allows you to group things the way you want and you can jump to it, so this is great.
And then, are we good with, you guys good with the handbooks? I was going to keep going down other lists of things. If you're ready, I have. Or, hold on, we gotta.
I'll move to approve the twenty-five, twenty-six handbooks.
I was going to just move you on through, sorry.
Got a motion? And a second by Carl? Just a blanket motion?
Sorry about that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carried. All right, we'll go down to legislative priority.
Thank you, finally. No, I'm just, I was so eager. I had my notes already. I was ready to go. Okay, so legislative priorities from IASB. I've shared with our admin team and you guys as well, the Google form, just so you could think ahead of time, kind of what, what you're identifying so far. Based on what we're hearing from our admin team, mental health, teacher recruitment and licensure, school funding and student achievement have our top four. Based on everything I've received so far. There's a couple of yours in there, and then the admin team has all completed it as well, so I'm open to what you guys' thoughts are off the cuff on that.
I didn't submit mine until earlier today, I'm sorry.
That's okay, that's okay. I really just wanted to give you a time so that you could think and kind of have some things thought ahead.
You're lucky, Carl, because I submitted mine and I can't, it doesn't let you go back and see your response.
Yeah, I don't think you responded. I don't think you're going to serve your response.
Yes.
Okay, you had school funding, school choice, teacher recruitment and licensure and mental health.
Cool, thank you.
I agree with myself, Jamie said.
Well.
And actually, wait, Jamie, sorry. Instead of teacher recruitment, you had student achievement. Sorry.
What are the trends that you're hearing on teacher recruitment, supply line? Are there things that you hear from ISB or from AEA?
No.
Things we're short on?
I mean, the shortages are still there. I feel like we do end up, most of the time, finding someone in the end, usually. But there's a lot of schools still sitting on a lot of vacancies at this point. I don't have a concrete number for you, but those hard-to-fill positions are extremely tough. I know people are having to get more creative with sharing or offering some online things. But I don't, I feel like we had a few kids this year in our senior class looking to go into education, which is good to hear. But I'm not hearing from the universities that they're seeing an uptick in their programming either, but so there's not a lot out there. I know the state's looking at a lot of things as far as licensure, you know, they, with CTE and things like that, trying to get some more alternative pathways to get a person to be able to certify to teach. And I, they'll continue to look at that, but other than that, we don't hear a ton.
Maybe that can be part of our goal setting.
Yeah, yeah. I do think we're going to have to get creative in how we sell ourselves as somewhere that people want to work and be.
Can you read the ones again that?
Yeah, so here's our top, taking into account the responses from the board that I've gotten to this point and the admin team. We have mental health, teacher recruitment and licensure, school funding, student achievement are four. School funding showed up in both the admin and the board.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I feel like as a board, that's always.
Right, that's, yeah.
Going to be that and student achievement.
Right.
Those are going to be top two.
Yeah. Yeah.
And then you have to submit that as our inputs for the book.
Yep, IASB asks us for that. And RSAI asked us to be thinking about it. They haven't asked us for it yet, but we can use the same information for that organization too.
Everybody lined up with that?
I think so. There's four that we have to submit, our top four.
Yeah, just, and they don't have to be ranked, just a flat four. So then what I'm hearing is mental health, teacher recruitment and licensure, school funding, student achievement. Those are our top four. Yep. All right.
We don't need to, do we need to move for that?
I'm, I'm, I'm.
Have we done a motion? I didn't know if it was officially.
I moved that we approved the legislative, twenty twenty-five legislative platform priorities.
I'll second that.
Close in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carry. All right, on to our affirmative action plan for twenty twenty-five thirty.
So our major change in that was changing from Tim to Matt Alachlan for this, this time around. And is it every five years we think we, that we need to update that? So if you have anything you want to throw out there?
So the only, only addition was we checked on the training department. What we have in there is the same one that Steve told me about a couple of weeks ago, so.
And this is just the annual reporting that we have to turn in, right? That's.
I'll move to approve the affirmative action plan.
Second.
Close in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next one, approving twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six student fees.
Yeah, I would say just, yeah, there were just a couple increases there, looking at our lunch fees. Lynette can speak to this specifically if she wants to.
Junior kindergarten went to zero. We were doing that at the three, four-year-old preschool this year, so that went down to zero. Again, show choir, well, that'd be offered, so that went down to zero. In regards to the sports activity tickets, those get actually sold to outside of Walmart. So Matt goes to his meetings and comes back and says, okay, we're raised, you know, Walmart has decided to raise. So that's where those changes came from.
Is that also the individual amount as well?
To the individual, yeah, to the individual events. The student passes, then he will sometimes change those to reflect.
Kind of reflect the increase.
He looks, we're, if not the lowest, one of the lowest.
That time, we were last time.
And so he came to me last year and said, we need to up these next year.
Yep.
Because we're already so low. And we're not going to make such a huge jump to be in the realm of other people. Obviously, current people that, we went up a little bit for that. And then student meals, we had talked about this when I did one of my budget reports, you know, nutrition's just gone down. Their fund balance has gone down. Cost of food, we all know, we all live at home, has, has skyrocketed. And so it's no different with the school. Then she's, you know, limited in her commodities. She's having other things outside of what she can get from the government. And so we haven't raised much over the last, you know, if you look back, we went six, seven years without raising anything, you know, and then we raised a little bit last year.
I move to approve the twenty-five, twenty-six student fees.
A second.
A second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Should carry. All right, item E, our head start, or HACAP Head Start rental agreement? It's just a renewal.
And this is just a renewal from what we had going this year there in the Hawk Center.
All the terms are the same as what you had before.
Yep.
I will move to approve the rental agreement with HACAP Head Start.
Second.
Close in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Item F, our Grantwood Power School software support agreement.
Power School is our student information system, yeah, so just.
Do we, and we just do this?
So, right, Joe.
Any suggestions for improvement on Power School?
I don't know, I guess, we haven't really looked at moving from it to some other one. I mean, that's one of the, basically that and JMC are the two big ones that people in the state use. But they host it, so then they do all the, keep on it, contact them for support, buy them, buy us using it.
Are there still like a lot of features that we don't use?
I would say the features that are included, we probably use all of them, but there's always extra stuff you can purchase and stuff which you really haven't. Besides, now School Messenger, which we use for our communications, is now part of Power School. Our school kind of went off on its own. Its way to survive was it bought up all these other companies. So, and our e-registration is a separate add-on through Power School as well that we purchase. So that's, that's part of this addition, the fees, is our, is that on top of it.
What kind of feedback do we get on Power School? I mean, I get, I have my own.
Right.
I don't know if you guys hear anything, positive, negative, anything. I don't think any of the principals hear anything.
I haven't heard anything. I have not asked either, but, yeah.
I really like it.
But.
Maybe.
Because I get an notification on my phone if a kid turns in something.
Or.
Something is what you mean to say.
And I don't, I would say that's my biggest thing in trying to look for something new, is depending on what it would be, is the amount of change that would have to happen to.
To justify.
To staff, students and families to make that change.
Figure out, yeah, I knew another.
Like for everything.
It'd have to be a pretty valuable.
I know there is talk at the state level of going with the statewide system, but I don't, it's come up the last two years. I have yet to see anything.
So that they can harmonize data collection.
I think so, yeah. Then we do state reporting, sometimes they'll pull right from the system and so on their end. It probably would be easier if we were all on the same, but I don't know that that will actually happen, but it is out there.
Hasn't gone up that much from last year. Was it twelve hundred, was it?
Something like that. I don't know. I mean, I was actually surprised because it, part of it's through the AEA, so I thought that, because a lot of their other stuff has gone up. But this one, I don't think, whether their, people are giving their money to the AEA or not, they're doing this.
Yeah.
Like they're still buying the service or them, they're still, I mean, they could host it themselves. There's people that host it themselves, but it's a lot more work on us to keep up with everything than to have them do it.
Move that we approve the Power School agreement for next year.
I will second.
Close in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Feels like deja vu, construction deja vu.
Don't say anything, Lynette.
Deep breath. These ones we knew were coming, so.
Yeah, so this is the first one that we talked about last meeting when you approved the contract. We decided to go with just a plumbing.
Yeah, plumbing in the bathroom.
Yeah, plumbing in the bathroom. So this one we knew was coming.
I will move to approve the trees construction change order one, amount of twenty-four fifty.
Second.
Close in favor?
Aye.
All right, item H, change order two.
Yep, yep, this one was one that kind of came up in the last couple of weeks. We had initially, we had the choice of putting flood vents in or building it up out of the flood plain. We at the time decided to go up out of the flood plain, flood plain. Then, once that kind of started to get going, this, it appeared that the steep incline was going to be problematic. So we decided to back off on that and go the route of flood vents. So what you'll see in the change order is the reduction in the amount of dirt we needed, so there's a credit there for that, but then the purchase of the flood vents resulted in additional cost of twenty-eight hundred dollars. So that's the amount of this change order. And we're still in compliance with what we need to be, just a different route to get there.
Gary, how'd that area act around with this most recent rain? Just curious kind of what you saw.
The water got up a little bit.
Sorry. The water got up, almost up to it, but didn't touch it.
Even it, where they've lowered it down to, it's still.
Yeah.
It's still good, yeah.
I move to approve change order number two for trees construction.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Should carry. Next, we have our NICC contract for twenty-five, twenty-six.
This is just continuation of what we've done in the past. Thing we have to agree to. If there were any major changes, there was an increase in the cost per credit to the district. They have not increased for a while. So, well, it's kind of stinks when you have increases. I understand why they have to do it too. They have, have increases on their end too that they have to adjust for, so. So that's one of the major changes.
I'll move to approve the contract with NICC for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year.
Second.
Close in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's approved. And item J, our change order number two, building services.
Yep, and so this goes back to the school safety grant and the work we've been doing around the district for that. So this change order came about as a result of that work, which that work is finished at this point, and we've been able to submit our last. And we've been able to submit our last claims to the grant. Just need to.
This one was coming out of contingency, so it technically didn't affect. We put in a $20,000 contingency.
That's what I was going to ask, I noticed the change order is for zero, but.
Yep, so we put in, but because we put it on a change order form, we wanted board approval for it just to be, just to be formal. So just, we had built in a $20,000 contingency on this, and so this change is coming out of that.
I move to approve the Change Order for Number 2 for Locky Building Services Inc.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And so are, is, are all of the safety investments completed? All the grant work's done?
Yep, yep. Yeah, the finished work. Did in every building, Rudy, you're good, right? The finished work is good at Lambert? For the windows? For the windows?
The mirrors come back?
Yeah.
And I think they need to come and adjust like door buttons after installs, which they're doing this week.
At the middle school?
Yeah.
Yes, maybe Lambert.
Possibly, I think. But they're doing that this week. At least coming to look at it to see what needs to be fixed by then.
Okay. Move on, item nine is comments from the public. Forward. And move to number 10. So it looks like August 8th, we've got session, Mr. Warden, if you're available.
Yep.
Join in at 7:30 and then we'll be back here on the 11th.
Yeah.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Close in favor?
Aye.
Aye.